All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our regular March ninth council meeting to order. Start with roll call. Hagan here, Moralia.
Eric.
Nelson.
Here.
Stupin. Daisy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Stephen from flag meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pull up the agenda.
Make a motion. Second.
A motion by John, second by Naima, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, February tenth, twenty twenty. Motion by Naima, second by Natalie, to approve the February tenth regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sips and comments?
Nobody talked to me.
Nobody talked to you!
Well, they're, uh, the people are still wondering about natural gas unless it's still coming here.
Well, I'm kinda waiting here for a question or two on that, but the phone... About the closest we're gonna get is thirteen miles. But we're gonna find a managing company that would even entertain... they're all areas. So it's, it's not as simple as, uh, there's, there's service territories that are bound by state laws, so... That's gonna be, that's maybe...
Awesome. Thank you for taking the house.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll let them know if they're not watching already.
Question about water restrictions. I saw something on Facebook. Some people don't have Facebook.
I would keep it to a minimum because we are taking on water again, so...
Oh, so say, be sensible on water usage, or...
Yeah. Can we put it up on the CD just in time as well? Sure, people don't, you know, do, in that case, do we wanna do an all-call? With our texting, email thing that we have? Is that okay with everybody?
Just so we have to know.
Okay, petitions and communications, building permit, five twenty-four. They're building on a garage to their house.
Where the residents used to live.
Or the north.
Mm-hmm.
This next to DeZale.
Oh, yeah.
They got plenty of that room to themselves.
Yeah, yeah, with that extra mile we had on the ground.
That's good.
Yeah, I calculated, is there a way?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Aaron, second by John, to approve building permit, five twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carry.
I abstain because I have a question. I'm gonna revise, uh, excuse me, revisit this.
Aye.
Um, the garage is going to, I see where the garage is going to go, but what... Are they coming in from the alley, or are they coming in from Beaver?
I believe they're coming in from Beaver.
Yeah, it looks like Beaver there.
Okay, so then there'd be, um, then there'd be, uh, cement there from the street all the way through.
Not necessarily.
I wonder how would that be?
My driveway is dirt, so we don't, not everybody uses concrete.
Okay, so we don't, we don't know what it's, what it's gonna be.
Right, just need to make sure that...
This is just to provide for the garage.
The garage, yeah. Right, but, uh, we're making it known that it's just the garage, nothing going up in or...
Correct.
Doesn't say anything, okay.
Okay, just wanted to...
So if they were to pour concrete at the driveway...
Yes.
I wouldn't do that until the street gets...
No, and I did tell them that because they said something about their sidewalk being so low, it really, they've got inches of water on it. I said, "Well, we're going to be renewing the streets anyway," so I wouldn't advise doing anything with your sidewalk yet at this point. So, they are aware of that.
I change.
If they come in looking for that cement work there or groundwork there, 'cause I know that area hopefully will...
There'd be a lot of dirt, so another street problem.
Yeah. Motion carry. Temporary liquor permit for the Elton Nation banquet, April fourth.
I move.
Motion by Naima, second by Greg, to approve the temporary liquor permit for the Elton Nation banquet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Temporary liquor permit for the Du- Dueling Duo fundraiser, which is for the baseball association, May second.
I move, take a step. I'll say.
Motion by Naima, second by Greg, to approve the temporary liquor permit for Dueling Duo pianos, May second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, did he... Oh, yeah, Bob, do you wanna go next, so you don't have to hang out through a whole meeting?
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Bill. I'm Brookings County Emergency Manager and the County Development Department. We're gonna talk, emergency manager first, and we're gonna talk a little bit about the census coming up. And this year, we did have two female declarations. The first one was for Blizzard in the springtime. I don't know if you guys had any claims on snow removal on that, some, some areas didn't. Then the second one, I know you guys did have some claims of the severe storms and flooding in September.
Our squad's claims didn't qualify for anything.
But the main thing is your citizens did get some money.
Yes, they did.
They qualified for, uh, sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars in wages and cents. And there's thirty-eight that registered, I guess it don't mean all thirty-eight guys, but thirty-eight people registered. FEMA has submitted sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars for the community, so... And where I come from, anything's better than nothing.
Will you say that number one more time? Sorry.
I'll just give you the paper. I don't have enough to give the press one.
That's okay, I got it, thank you.
You can have it after me if you want.
I'll try to have it.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? I got a couple more.
I'd like to. Thank you.
And then I pass on a handout table. This is what I'm... I was here September, I believe, last year. And, uh, if you guys have a disaster, if you turn the page to the second page, once again, all disasters start local. You start on the bottom of this page, actually done in reverse. Local residents get affected by the disaster, municipal works, and your municipal fire and ambulance service comes in. If you guys, the city court gets involved, along with the city council, and if it's a bad enough situation, you guys declare a disaster. Then it comes up to the county. We declare a disaster, send it up to the governor. And then typically, for one community, it won't, it won't get, well, the president, but in our two declarations this year, or last year, it affected the whole county. Once it's county-wide, then we can typically at least apply it to the state to see if we're gonna get any federal funding. At federal funding, something, you know, it's about seven, every seven years, in my records, that we get federal funding. So it's not something we can count on every year. But if we get a disaster, you know, if we, we hope we don't, but if we get a tornado or something, we got one of those back in two thousand and one, but that wasn't enough for a federal declaration. But we think it's some state funding to clean that up. And of course, the county commission is always willing to help. In case you have a windstorm or something, we usually send our trucks over there to help you. And I know last year, we bought a new pump, which they did fun for us. So, when we didn't buy a pump in September, we knew that it needed it, we actually bought the pump in the March disaster. So, then we used it, and it was a good thing we had the pump. They need money better than no money.
Right.
And they paid for six hundred dollars of a sand that I had, and they bought one thousand, five hundred dollars of sandbags. Or helped us buy the sandbag. The main thing, record keeping, as the city whoever tell ya, just have to have the records. They typically don't pay for overtime, and that's what hurts a small community. But most of yourself is, uh, if you pay for overtime, well, so if you do it within your regular scheduled pay of the time that you typically work, that doesn't get declared. It's only the stuff after hours. And I don't know if you have voluntary people helping to shovel snow and clear roads, all that, if you just capture it, all that could be used as a buildup for it next time. So you might use the event you had in two thousand and nineteen as an example, and then if approved record keeper, or someone gets you more hours and more time, that may or may not help in the future.
Excuse me, so, um, all the employees that worked overtime during our different disasters, the record keeping, we should keep record and then submit it?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
What we did is we had a meeting. FEMA came to my office two little times, or the city-county building. We invited the, we invited the communities that were affected. And they come down, and then they talk to FEMA, and FEMA actually comes out and talks to each individual applicant separately, looks at your records, determine what you have, and do the ones that make the determination on what's valid and what's not. Gradual, this, this meet here and other conversations. Yes, a regular eight-hour date in other counties. And if you, if you only work forty hours, but you don't care when them forty hours are, then that doesn't count either, so... FEMA's got their own mix. All we can do at the county level is get you to talk to FEMA. And then it's your record keeping that's gonna either make it or break it, whether it's volunteers or your overtime. Equavation process, we went over already. You guys send it to the county, the county does work, are on the, will hire out assistants. If you need assistance from Volga, come to my office, and, and, uh, I have no problem getting assistance from the other, the whole county. Anybody in the county, I can, I can have them over here. If you need assistance from the county highway, or tree limbs away, something like that, all it takes is contact in my office or the county commission, who I can work with. And then if we can't do it, if we can't handle the work, then I can go through the state of South Dakota and get other counties involved, so... And typically, if it comes to the county, it's all mutual aid. It doesn't cost you anything. If it does cost you anything, it's gonna be strictly like gas or whatever it takes to get your equipment here. You know, we had, we had a case where we had lost in the, in the lake throws over for, I wanna say a hundred and five days. And, uh, I had to bring Watertown down several times. And the only charge I had from them guys was do gas from Watertown then. And don't ever let, let paying for gas and stuff like that, it's two people asking for help. Because we got the county commission, and we'll get it there. The main thing is if you recover from the disaster, whatever it is, if you need assistance, ask for it, and they'll go figure out a way to help you, help you out. Emergency manager, don't be near the rest of state laws. I work for Brookings County. All, I take care of all communities. I have no allegiance to one city over another, even though my office is in the city of Brookings. Trust me, there's a line right in that building. You know where the county site is, and we know where the city, city site is. I work for all citizens of Brookings County. Homeland Security Interface, that's typically me and the sheriff. The sheriff obviously has the guns and does the homeland security stuff. I take care of a lot of homeland security grants and apply for them and help determine who gets homeland security grants. And if you think you would never get a homeland security grant, ask your school. I'm sure they've had homeland security grants for some of their camera systems and stuff over here in Dublin. Emergency planning, I do have an LEPC, local emergency planning committee. Your Twin City Vans, I believe, is part of it. CHS, I've seen them on the list. They come into Brookings, we have quarterly meetings, and I keep a list of all hazardous chemicals in Brookings County, in my office. Anyone in your, in your area wants to know what kind of chemicals you have, and often they can stop by my office and we can look up which company they got, and I got a list of which chemicals they have inside of them. And then the lo- local emergency operations plan, that's our lead-up, that, uh, that just tells us how we're gonna operate. And in that lead-up, Elton is mentioned. Elton is mentioned because you've got a public works, and you've also got a fire department and ambulance service, and those are all in there. And basically, if both of these assistants, and you guys have got the stuff and, and you're not using it, then we can pull you over, over there and vice versa. Anyhow, NIMs is just, uh, your fire department would know NIMs more than anybody. That's incident command system. One, one person takes care of about seven people under them, and, uh, just a hierarchy. By federal law, you have to agree to use NIMs in case of disaster, and we have, everyone in Brookings County has. You've signed off on my pre-disaster mitigation plans and all the, the other plans, and all that mentioned that we do the natural incident management system. The POD and PPCC should be getting some, some interesting meetings coming up here pretty soon because of this coronavirus out. Right now, there is no, no vaccination for the coronavirus. If there was ever a vaccination for the coronavirus, and they wanna, wanna inoculate the whole county, they would do what's known as a POD, points of dispensing. They fly the, the materials in the soup hall, probably on a military plane, they truck it up here under guard. We set up over at the school hotel center, and we're, we'll set up the tech guy. The last time I was, about forty thousand people, which is Brookings County itself, and then we would get like, maybe over Trubeck Benton, you know, a little bit north. We, I don't think we do anything in, in Duo County, but we do take care of Moody County completely, Kingsbury County, and then some of the stuff around. The, uh, Minnesota border can come over. But we would, we would take care of forty thousand people in about five days. And then the pandemic planning coordinating committee, if you wanna see what we do here, we got a website called be ready Brookings dot com. I didn't write it down because the coronavirus has now started, and I've been using this sheet for a long time. But it's called be ready Brookings dot com. That has actually our pandemic plan, complete plan. In case you have any questions on what would be doing if we get the coronavirus, and if we need to give, give shots for it or something like that, we can actually set up, I wanna say, a ninety-six bed hospital in Brookings, besides our regular, regular hospital. So, and all that's in that pandemic plan that we got on. And other than that, I'm available twenty-four hours a day, just seven of them are on here. My deputy's available if I'm not. My office manager only works, she herself not on there, that's the office eight to five. Any questions on the emergency plan? I might talk a little bit faster. I'm gonna keep you here as long as the coast is alive. There's, there's no questions. We're gonna take, uh, we did drop off a few, a couple of sandbags, which is a thousand sandbags, to your, uh, city workers, individuals, persons, sorry. And, uh, that's free for you guys to use however you want. Instead of, county commission decided, instead of setting it up so you come to my, when you send a citizen down to my office to sign for sandbags, just give it to the community, you guys decide how you wanna give them out.
Do you have a sand?
Yeah. Well, that was, we give the sandbags, and we appreciated you by the sand.
Yeah, I was just asking.
I went to Volga, I hate to say it, I, I went to a community, and I went and got the public works guy, and I said, "I got you a thousand sandbags." And he went to get his forklift. He thought they were full. I said, "Nah, not, we, we're not that." I think, I was a combat engineer in the army, but that consisted of, my main job when I was doing that was filling sandbags with a handle, a dehandle shovel. So a thousand sandbags is a lot of sandbags to fill a hand. Next is the census. We've got the, we put this page with a lot of writing on it. In the town and country shopper, so we get the largest spread throughout the year. We didn't choose one, I know we got three papers in this small county, we got the Brookings register, but we elected to go to town and country shopper and try to get it out to the, to the people that don't necessarily get a, a city paper. And then, you can read through there, some of the main things are, it's confidential. We don't care. The sheriff would not be notified if you got an illegal person living in the house. Your zoning law people won't be notified if you got twelve people in a house, but you're only supposed to have three. No one's gonna be notified that from the census bureau. If they do, they will go to jail, the person. If you've got a citizen that don't like the, the government, what they're gonna do is they're gonna get a, a thing in the mail. And they wanna get a handout, I think I gave them all of them. Should be a handout.
Yep.
What you're gonna do is you're gonna get a piece of mail, and on that mail, it's gonna come from the census bureau. And it's gonna have this little, little tag on it right here. If they don't like government people knocking on their door, all they've gotta do is take that, that number, I don't know how many digits, ten digits it says here, and find a computer, and I think the Brookings library is gonna be set up, they can come to my office and do it. They want, they can go to any computer, you plug those, those ten digits into a computer, you answer their question, and you'll never get a federal census person knocking on your door. If you throw that letter away, you will have a federal individual knocking on your door. They are gonna count how many people's in your house, whether you want them to or not. So, the question is, do you want them to see how clean you keep your house, or do you just wanna answer the questions off? We recommend it to answer them all.
They actually recommend?
Yes.
Yes.
I did the census here, I've done the census a bunch, but yeah. And we're not, we're not allowed to, if there is cocaine or reefer or something on there, which, when I was doing it in Minnesota, you're not allowed to say anything about it, and if you do, you will go to jail.
Yeah.
You, you can't.
It's confidential.
Unfortunately, the government did say that they was looking for illegal weed, and that one time, and all this, all those are false rumors. No one's looking for, for anyone. All they wanna know is how many people you've got in your household. And the county commission's fully, we don't have much on the census. Brookingscount.com, I believe it is, is the website. I got that off of, that sent me to this link right here on this one. I believe it's Brookingscount.com. It is a city of Brookings website, but our, our census count committee is a county-wide organization that we all belong to. And my part of the census count to give you guys information is my little spreadsheet that I sent out. So we just wanna let you know. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to call me at any time. Anybody can call me at any time. I do what I can with it. But the census is real important, there's, there's a series of talking points on here. You know, I don't know, I understand you're getting your, your sewer system fixed. Some of them have had some issues back fall. All that, all that money that comes from the state of South Dakota, that's where it comes from. Some comes from, from local taxes, state taxes. The state of South Dakota gets a lot of money from the federal government. And the only way that the federal government gives money is by how many people you have in your jurisdiction. So, it counts. Just wanna really help us if we get a good, solid council. We don't care where they come from, we don't care what color their skin is, and we don't care if they're Democrat or Republican, Independent, whatever else. If you got any Libertarians, whatever, whatever party you belong to, don't care. Any questions? Very good. If you do have any questions in the future, you have my point of contact information.
When is the census starting?
April the first. I think it was, you should start getting letters in the mail pretty soon. And I guarantee they would keep hold of that, that little number, and you can go on the web, the website's probably hot now. They'll probably start taking some, some information. That, that page came off actually from the federal website. That's not a local form, that goes straight into the federal system. And if there's nothing else, I'm available to give a call anytime you like.
Thank you.
Thank God. Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome. Have any more sandbags with me?
Public works?
We do, we do have the sandbags and stuff set up in the sand and solid shed there. They're kinda in a garbage bag there, or a garbage can that's shut up so the wind doesn't blow them around. So if anybody wants them, they can help themselves. There is a shovel there too. And I'm always finding one shovel, so if that disappears, they'll have to bring it home, so... We're having problems again with the, the main sewer line out there. Last time we jettled it, we pulled the, the gasket out of it. Meaning the pipe is probably separated or something, somewhere along the line there, and it's catching stuff. So I called, uh, Bill Thorson, he was the guy that we had here, the wastewater technician from, uh, from, uh, Rural Water. And they had a camera that they would use. It costs five hundred dollars for the first drop-in, and then two hundred and fifty after that, for each drop-in. I figured it's probably maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars to have that whole line camered out, which is like forty-five hundred feet. So, and then you'll know what the problem is, so... They could probably do it. I talked to him this morning, and he said possibly next week. It's out in West River now, so... Once they get it back here, they can be able to come over and do it, if we can get them out there, buy it, so... But we jettled it this morning, and we got it flowing again. Usually, it'll run for two weeks to a month, and then it'll be flowing again, so... So, that's where that's at. Uh, along that same lines, about surfacing, the whole jetter out, I don't think we're gonna be using that anymore. It's just taking up room now, so I don't know what your procedure of that would be, so...
We'll pass a resolution, and then we have to appoint, um, appraisers, two, three people to appraise it, and then we can accept, accept or we put it in paper for that.
We've been patching roads and stuff. About the only thing we could get in to stay in down here was a bunch of crushed concrete because of the water. And that's road shot with all the trucks turning there into the alley here and going to Twin City Fan. I don't know what else you can do, so... The patch that we use, I've had that ordered. We got just a few bags of that left, so we should be getting some of that in the next couple of weeks. And then the, uh, trees. I need to know what you guys wanna do by the end of March, for ordering trees for the tree man. So, the order means to be in by March thirty-first.
Where do those come from?
Conservation District, oh, Brookings, their conservation office, so...
Would you find if we just give you a budget per, you know, or certain dollar amounts to spend and stuff, or...
That's fine. It'll probably just be maple trees and stuff, so it's thirty, thirty-five bucks a piece.
Autumn leaves.
Everybody likes their red leaf trees, so...
I see trees.
Yep.
Um, as far as the asphalt, um, do you do any asphalt work in the summer, or do you have any stuff to do with?
Nope.
No? Do we ever have anybody come in and do it, or...
We haven't done anything the last few years because the sort of roads that need it are gonna be the ones that get...
Right, but I just seem, you know, there's a lot of stuff that could be grinded, you know, grinded out and filled back, you know, some asphalt, so...
No, we don't have any, as far as a hot mix box or anything, so...
But they have them, just, you know, they don't take care of it, it's just gonna get worse, and it's gonna be...
You're gonna do the whole thing? Huh? You're gonna do the whole thing if you don't, like, right now?
Right, exactly, and get, get in there, grind some slots out, put some new asphalt down, you know?
But as soon as you lose your base here.
Yep, and that's a lot of problem that we got here, is we don't have a base because of water tables lie. It's just, it's just a sponge underneath, so... So...
There's a lot of traffic there.
Mm-hmm. Heavy traffic.
What's the solution?
Pour about ten inches of concrete there.
Yeah, that'd work.
I have a question. So, a lot of times, they pull in to the yards around there to pull into the elevator. Is it you that lays gravel down there, or is it ZJ?
I'm the one that usually digs it out so the water run and get off of the street, so, in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Okay, cool, we appreciate that.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know why either, why trucks can't drive on the road instead of clear out into the, well, bar.
It's just progressively gotten worse year by year, they.
Maybe you drive on the edge of the road and that's how you're breaking the edge of the road. I mean, it's, I mean, they're out in there five, six feet.
Yeah, big time.
So we should, uh, send them a little.
Hey, look with that.
Well, it's, you know, it's the truck drivers, I mean, it's not. You know, it's not the whole of traffic, I'd say it's probably the guys that are coming in and.
Oh, in the elevator?
Yep.
The curb there.
And that's all I have, so.
Is the pump running yet down there?
Nope.
Okay.
So, we'll be able to shut that off, it's like you said, it's running on its own now, I'll check it when I leave here. Day by day, so.
So you got the water flowing, main line out right now?
Yep.
It's plugged in?
Not yet.
But there was something in there.
Lot of rags, again.
Yeah, that needs to run on the oil too. Do a flushing if anything.
Well, the station's doing good?
The one on Third Street is up twenty hours with the, you know, the frost and stuff is all going out, so. Everything's starting to pick back up again, so.
Well, if we keep this way up, we have a decent spring.
Water table at my house is at eight foot, so from the ground, top of the ground down is where the water's at.
Has it, what, when was it a month ago?
Nine foot.
Okay.
So, it's coming up slow.
Where was it added at its worst?
The water was about four feet.
And it is.
Oh yeah, but everybody's basements could be different levels.
Well, yeah, that's just where it's at in my house, you know, so.
Or we're using your basement as a reference, so we're halfway back to catastrophic.
That's all I have.
That's good. Um, you have library, I do.
One thing that's probably, we got the quote for the replacement of the side-by-side that we talked about last year, or whatever. So, um, Steve called or whatever and day honored a quote or whatever from back in August thirtieth or whatever, so.
What?
The replacement of the, the side-by-side, the side-by-side. Yeah, because that's in this year's.
Yeah, I remember. We'll put next year's in the deal, so.
I don't know if we wanna. Because what are we getting, probably eighteen hundred dollars, I don't know, nineteen hundred?
Yeah, over there.
Oh, I think we're close to a thousand.
Oh my. You wanna go ahead and vote on that? Purchase the side-by-side? So our. We have trade-in value of seven thousand dollars on the side-by-side. Um, unit price is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, leaving us with a balance to buy the new. Unit of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
So I got everything done that you need?
Yep.
Like, extra lights or spotlight if you want or checking stuff, or?
We have one of those that we put on there, so. Show light, spotlights. windshield roof, I think is over there on it, so.
She sounds like a jewelry store to me, though.
It's right, and that's the thing, it's used.
Doesn't, doesn't have a heater and a doors on it.
It's a tool cat, right?
No, it's a, it's.
Similar to what we got in the jail?
Well, not really, it's pretty much the same thing as what we got.
Oh, okay.
Motion?
I move.
I'll say it.
Motion by Naima, second by Greg to purchase the five thousand, four hundred gas side-by-side. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Sorry, I did.
Can you put attachments on that, or?
So, bar manager does not have a report, he was.
It's not like school.
Okay, finding stuff is.
And all that stuff, you can put a blade on, blade knife or whatever, you know, stuff like that.
Hey, so I went to the county qualification meeting last Tuesday to find out our updates. There were no changes to the housing in Elton, and I'll report on this, we have to have a meeting still. There was, they did increase price of lots by thirty percent. Because lots are selling for more, so they increased everybody's lot price. Um, they had, people have, residents have until the twelfth. To turn in any agreements in order for their assessments, if they have agreements towards that. It has to be in writing to me by that date. Um, as of right now, I've not heard a peep out of anybody, but like I said, we still have to meet. And that date is March sixteenth, so next Monday. If we don't have anything, it'll be a short meeting, we look, you're supposed to look at the assessment book and you approve it as is, or whatever. Mainly, what you're looking for is if there's gross negligence on the county side of property values, or something's missing. I don't believe, they're really good at getting everything in there and.
So taxes are going up thirty percent?
No, your, your property assessment, you get a tax bill and your, what your property is assessed at at the county level. So, your, so it's this year's assessment which will be coincided with next year's taxes. I mean, there are two different types of bills, two different, the first one, the one, ours, the assessment isn't a bill, it's just that this is what you're about, you're how home and. Property is assessed at, what they feel, and they'll be coming through. All the small towns in the county this year, so they're gonna be knocking on your door, looking, wanting to make sure everything is corrected in their assessment. And if you don't let them in, expect your bill to go up. Or your assess value to go up, because they will look at it at the higher level of things if you don't allow them in your property. So, reminder, I'll rip out a reminder, we can meet at seven, I assume that's probably best time, next Monday at seven o'clock. Meet for that. Um, then on Wednesday that week as well, the eighteenth, there's this municipal.
Municipal meeting.
Municipal and district meeting that most of you are attending. Um, so. I, I try to go to it every year, they, they give you legislative update, what the bills are going through as far as what affects us. You can meet other people from other towns. Um, a lot of different companies come in and send their representatives, I usually the. If not their state representative, the center of cities, but, um, their. In-house helpers or whatever they're called, um, come down and. Huh?
Eat.
There you go, thank you, and also sometimes you get your district representatives as well that come into those meetings. So it's a good, good experience, we don't, otherwise, you get, most of the council members don't usually attend because it's usually out of town. Um, the May meeting needs to be changed, it's a fourth, that happens to be the, the schools' elementary concert that night. So. If you don't wanna go on the second Monday, we could go on that Wednesday. Could be the other option.
We're not a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, we can do Tuesday.
I, I, Wednesday doesn't matter to me, I just.
Yeah, some people, it does.
I would prefer not to do the second Monday because that's a school board meeting and that.
And it works, yeah, I have that issue with my husband being on the school board, it makes, makes that difficult for us.
Can you do partial Tuesday, Wednesday? I don't care.
What dates?
So either the fifth or the sixth of May instead of the fourth, and then you also have to look at June too, and we're gonna change that one. So it's, instead of, we changed all of the ones that were close to beginning the month to the second Monday. So we wanna maybe change them to either Tuesday or the Wednesday of that week.
A lot of people have issues with Wednesdays, the church, so Tuesday would probably be more respectable.
Tuesday, Tuesdays.
So I'll go ahead and change the ones that we had changed to the second Monday to the, the Tuesday after.
Can you send out my sound check?
Sure can.
The Tuesday after the Monday it should have been.
Yes, correct.
Oh wow, the next day later.
That's what I meant.
You said it right, thank you.
Excellent. And we, um, by the way, we have donations that have come in, uh, from. The city for the, um, municipal leap that's put on the eighteenth, so that's pretty cool. It's gonna be a nice meeting, too. Ninety-five.
Last thing is, um, you know, I had quoted new office equipment, new, um, furniture for my office to make it. More customer purview, you know, having a customer desk instead of them coming into my office on my desk, my working desk. And then there would actually be two desks, so two, so it could be potentially a two-person office, we lost. The parking rack office to the pantry. It's, if you guys do plan on ever hiring another person, it would work better to have an actual desk for them instead of them working at my space. Plus, I feel that I can get things, you know, things will be a little bit more organized as far as. Move some file cabinets, bring my printer in here instead of where it is now. I just, you know, you budgeted for it, still looking to see if you're gonna allow it to happen.
Do you still have a quote?
Yep. I also might look at carpeting slash tile, um, the cost-wise that for the space. We have several different options, obviously we've got commercial carpet like we have now. Um, carpet tile, which will allow you to hold up anything that might be damaged and so it'll last longer. And then, of course, type of laminate, the only thing I have concern about putting down laminate is people will stand up the office. Space and then there'll be a puddle of water where they stood, that's my only issue with that. Um, cost-wise carpets are obviously gonna be cheaper, between five and six hundred dollars for installation and cost. And then the tile, they, they said roughly around a thousand dollars for installation.
Do you do like a ceramic tile of some sort, or?
Uh.
Or?
No, it wasn't ceramic, it was like vinyl tile pieces, I don't think.
Oh, the carpet. You were talking, oh, I thought you were actually talking like the stone or whatever.
No, 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 it'd be like wood, not real wood.
Terrible, but. I don't know how that would, that would echo the.
Yeah, that's the.
They had that dirt ceramic out and stuff, that stuff, it looks like.
That's a tile that I brought, it's not tile, it's laminate wood, not real wood, but laminate pieces.
Yeah, they don't.
That has a thirty-year warranty on it though.
Like tile groove?
No, it's not, it's like a glue done tile.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you go with ceramic tiles, you just gotta watch slipperiness, you have to hit a certain grade for, I know it's not commercial, but.
So we don't have to. I don't know, I'm leaning towards if anything, just doing like the carpet tiles. I mean, that way, it's like, the water absorbs it and I think that would.
Well, with the tiles, you can just take them out to a, put a replacement in it, it'd be.
Then do something like a mat or something for your chair?
Yeah, I have a plastic mat.
That'd work, right?
Yeah, it works fine.
And what was the total of carpeting?
Um, the, between five and seven, I think is what it would be.
Yeah.
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 Yes, this room too?
No, just your office, I didn't quote, I mean, it would probably be about the same, because these rooms aren't that much different in size. And we really, I mean, I think we should redo this. I'm sorry, the room look is really dated. Yeah, cement between the door. And that was with installation, like with the. Office furniture that's installed, I did ask her how long it would take. It takes fourteen days for ordering and then she said between four and six hours to install it. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of moving of stuff.
Well, we'll have to get our carpet in place first.
Right, right, oh yeah, yeah.
To what?
Might have to move it.
Temporary office indigent or something?
Yeah, I, we have, the bill, we have, we can lock this door, so yeah, we could do that. I mean, I can get the, I'm planning if I, to move three of the five file cabinets into the story room. And then two of them will sit up against the east wall of my office on each corner. The two of the main ones that I use the most of.
We did budget for all of that.
We, yeah, yep.
Fourteen days and then. And then.
Alright.
Oh, you like that?
I do too.
I have a hand package.
Yeah, the pictures, I mean, it gives you an idea what it looks like.
You want one of those exercise balls to sit on too?
I think, yeah, being able to stand up is cool, but I mean. I don't expect you. This'll be, I think this'll be good.
It's a lift desk?
No, this one is.
Oh, I see, those are pretty expensive.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
They are.
Not that, not that.
You can just get a thing that sits on top and just.
Yeah, yeah. But I'll be standing up anyways when we have customers, which I, I, I like that idea of having people have that, that's their space, you know, not. You know, it's just weird to have them coming in, and my desk is a disaster because I'm doing stuff here and there. You know, I have to clean it up to make space for somebody or I felt something out.
Would you like a lift thing for your?
I am not at this moment.
We have them at work, or I don't have one, but everybody that sits in the office, what I have, they.
I don't know if I would use it or not, I, I mean, that's something I could add later. I mean, I even, I have a.
Power lift.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
You know you have a lift.
I move to upgrade.
A second. Motion by Naima, second by Natalie to upgrade the flooring and office equipment. Is that what you call it? Desk, whatnot, office furniture. Uh, in finance office, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? What about, do we want, wanting to get a, see what it would cost for this? We can probably wait on this, right?
Well, yeah.
Let's, just do that, get that done, that way, because if you're gonna move it in here, you can't do everything at once anyway, so.
Yeah.
Now, see if, if we like it to last and give it a little bit and see.
Yeah, see if we like it, if not, a good change.
Right, yeah. Tear it out, start with.
Hey, that's all my time. Fire department?
I can get anything from them.
Ambulance?
They just had a successful refresher, I mean, they had twenty four people, a lot of towners, so that's good.
Yay. Library?
Okay, um, story hour is going smoothly with good attendance, the thousand books before kindergarten reading programs go as well. Summer reading program plans continue. Will be ordering books and craft supplies soon. I mentioned the outdoor book return in my February report, the current one was purchased in two thousand and three and needs to be replaced. I looked at prices, which don't make comparable to the existing book return, the current price ranges from twenty-three hundred to up to four thousand dollars for what we are looking for. However, prices change every year, this price does not include a book cart, but one is not needed. Also, the library's co-share printer copier is another problem, I'm having issues with it not printing on construction paper, cardstock and transparencies. These papers jam every time. I use these specialty papers weekly for story hours, summer reading and bulletin boards. Patrons also use the printer copier for various things and I just had someone who needed to print out their own cardstock, but I had to turn them away. The printer copier was purchased used in two thousand and eleven for one thousand eleven, one thousand one hundred dollars from Century Business Products. I contacted them for information on leasing a new or used printer copier. Based on printing needs and stock availability, they recommended a. Uh, lease for sixteen months at sixty-one dollars and seventy cents per month and twelve cents per page. Included are parts, labor, mileage, drums and toner. Um, lease, the lease also includes delivery, installation and training.
So the old one, was the one new plus twelve cents a copy?
Yeah, so they might, they, they, they don't have a counter on it, we did charge for her.
So the old one, could that be upgraded or fixed, or?
I really don't think so.
What does the new one cost?
I just kinda wonder.
Cause, so six months, sixty dollars, I mean, that's thirty-six hundred dollars plus twelve cents, what, what's our normal usage?
I don't know.
Oh, a lot.
It depends, summer months are more.
A lot.
Six, seventy or sixty?
Because we.
This is a seventy, sixty-month lease for sixty-one dollars and seventy. This is a seventy, sixty-month lease for sixty-one dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, now, did I remember hearing her correctly, the bigger jobs that we have as a city are done through there?
Yes, I run the budget and through there, so I end up running it twice, because we do it for when you do the budget, and then we make changes and I run it again, anything. I ran all of our ordinance books for each of you guys to have, I ran that through her, because although I have two printers, mine aren't that type of printer copier, you know, I can run it on both sides, but A, it either takes forever and takes a lot of ink, a printer copier combination, like she hasn't, it's meant for that, mine aren't meant for that.
And includes the drums and toner.
Yep.
And includes all the labor if there was...
No, I, I was...
And there's an actual cost of it if we wanted to bucket out already.
My, my suggestion is to buy it outright, because the twelve cents a page, if you do the math with your head, that was wonderful. We just buy, outright buy one, I think that's gonna be better. Does the school paper have of that, or how does that work?
I think they have their own.
They have their own, that's, I think they have the same company.
In the library?
Oh, no, they have, they have several different copiers.
Right, I did, okay. But we kinda split the library with fifty-fifty with the school most of the time, right?
But not the, not this.
Not that.
No, not this part.
That was my question.
Yeah. They use their stuff and, and we have to have our stuff at the library.
If we bought one in two thousand and eleven for two thousand and one...
It was used.
I know, for eleven hundred dollars, I'm just thinking, I mean, if I could find one that's for four thousand dollars, that's really, that's decent, I have no idea what the market is.
Well, and I know we, we had a, a contract with them, and we were paying something monthly, I don't remember what it was, and we were paying for copies, and two or three years later, I don't remember what it was, they ended up canceling the service contract with us, and it was like, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have bought it had you, we knew you were gonna cancel the service contract two years, two, two, three years later.
Yeah, after I talked to Sherry, she mentioned it, last time I was in the library, and she said that with that one, they had a service contract, but it was only good for a year, I think is what she said, and, I mean, including the toner and everything.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what the toner costs.
Is this what the school uses, and you said?
I think so, but I'm not, a same company, different, I mean, they're all...
Oh, yeah, your printer.
One of the, one of the things that would be good to purchase outright would be, if it's the same one, we kinda sorta ask, you know, who would feel help out with you know why, because he, you know, he knows how that would work, and I just don't, I think we should just buy it on outright.
Oh, we should look into it, I think.
Oh, the five-year contract, I mean...
At least know the cost.
Right.
And, and if there's some possibility to buy it outright with a service contract as well.
Right. Now, no, yes, now, the, the situation here right now is it was needed yesterday, and so I would need to go back to her, or, you know, we would need to talk to her about this particular one or something like this that would match up with the school, and then just say, yeah, get it, because we're behind, she, it's not working.
Well, I think in the time being, if we need to make multiple copies, or maybe we can make out a deal to school and tell them, you know, keep track of whatever we print, and tell them, make a decision for...
That may or may not work, and I'm thinking, when I think about what she does, she has to be there, and she'd have to go all the way to the other side of school to do that. That's a possibility, but I'm thinking that at, at this particular point in time, we look at what the price is, set a price limit, and if it's within five hundred, one where the elderly, maybe we do it that way, because going down to the school, I just, knowing what she has to do, that, that might not be an option.
Do you have an idea what they cost?
Do I?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I, I talked to her about letting her go and do whatever, but...
I mean, this particular model looks like it costs six thousand dollars.
Ooh, I like that.
What did you say that was over the?
Well, it's thirty-six hundred plus ten, ten cents a copy.
Yeah.
Or twelve cents.
Twelve cents a copy.
So, I mean...
What's the, what's the warranty on that?
I don't know.
That's over five years.
Yeah, would have to...
And this, this one was used in the last nine. You gotta do it, you hope for the last nine.
Well, yeah.
But...
I mean, brand-new instead of used, so.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully you get it.
But we, we intend to be Elton Public Library for a very long time, we might as well make the investment, because we do, it's, it's long overdue, she milked that for a long time.
And here it says the copies will be billed at point zero one two, not twelve cents.
Ooh, that's, that's way better, I mean, I was doing that math, and that math was scary. I was like, well, that's more, I mean, in five, in sixty months, it could cost more than the actual printer.
Yeah.
So, that's a way better number.
So, what is that?
Yes, it's all black and white pages, we bill it on exactly, exact usage, add point zero one two per page.
So, one point.
What's the...
So, less than, so a little more than a penny a page, which is...
Which is better, that's way better.
And that covers all.
Yeah, that scared, that scared me a lot.
Yeah.
I was doing math, I was like, it's like, I mean, that's a lot, that's...
Sixty months, what did you say it was?
Thirty-six hundred and sixty dollars in sixty months.
And what's about the most that you would use it for?
I use it a couple times a year.
But then other people would use it, but then she would charge for that.
She charges her copies.
That's a copy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Making money.
There you go.
I mean, that doesn't sound as bad to me.
Right.
Now, now that it's not twelve cents, so bad.
Because, because your lease contract order, I mean, if you expect to get ten years, that's seventy-two hundred dollars, and if you could get them by spend six thousand on a new one, I mean, that's, that's kind of a wash.
So, what do you think, to, sixty months, and then you have that warranty in there?
Because we don't know what a service contract costs, if we, if we did buy a new one, we wouldn't know what a service contract costs. I mean, you're still gonna have money invested in that, and you're gonna have to buy toner.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
This includes everything.
I was just gonna say, does this include?
It includes all parts, labor, mileage, drums, and toner.
Yeah, so, it's a, we, we would...
So, the only thing it wouldn't include is we have to provide the paper, which I do anyways. I, I break her rings of paper when she needs them, regular paper, she provides her own cardstock and stuff, but...
So, you're making my...
My only question would be, after the sixty months, is it possible we purchase it?
Yeah.
I wonder about that, too. And this will also give her the option of, this machine isn't working for us?
We need something else, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know, that was also her concern, is getting a brand-new machine and not knowing if it's gonna be up to what we need, or it's way too far.
Sixty months, it's how long?
Five years.
Five years.
Well, in five years, I think we should know, and that's a pretty good price.
Well, they should be, I mean, if we, we need to know whether there's, if we can change the machine if it doesn't work for us.
And then, if we can, about how much it would cost to buy it out after that. So, we can have a motion with those contingencies on it.
Yeah, I would like that, what you just said. Just like this.
So, there's motion on the table to purchase the new, or lease, excuse me, lease the new copier for sixty months, sixty-one dollars and seventy cents a month, with the service optional maintenance agreement on there for point zero one two per page, under the stipulation that we can exchange the machine if something isn't right about it, if Sherry doesn't like it, and the possibility of purchasing it outright after our lease time.
That's what I moved to.
Can I get a second? You have to option here.
Emblem, yeah.
Erin. Can't not spell your name today. Okay, so, motion by Naima, second by Erin, to lease a new copier, sixty months, sixty-one dollars and seventy cents per payment, with the service agreement, with those two stipulations, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for having that out, so I can read it.
Yep.
Okay, parking rack?
Parking rack, we did not receive any applications, there was the only one coming in, and either she couldn't get the email to work or whatever.
We're gonna leave it out there another month.
Mm-hmm, no other choice.
We need to advertise other, other places, though.
Yeah.
Do you wanna try an indeed again? That's the one that we did for the bond manager position, we had good luck.
Are we still looking at the part-time seasonal employee, like, I guess we...
Have the possibility to go to, okay, the time?
I don't know, I don't know that, that indeed isn't really worth it, yeah.
How much was it?
Bar one? Couple hundred bucks.
For running for how long?
I don't remember, a couple weeks. Yeah, but the thing with, with this indeed is you, hey, you tell, you tell it how much you want to pay approximately, and that's how much they push it. And you don't even pay more, they're gonna, you're gonna push, they're gonna push it out further, but I don't know that what we're looking for is really worth it, they have to pay that kind of fee. We usually, in previous years, obviously, the Elton Record, we've done the Shopper, Job Service, yep, and then I've also contacted Jen Campman to push it out to the SDSU students that might be looking for an internship or a summer job in that type of educational area.
And right now, at this point, we're probably putting it in the record?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd say we push it to all the other, now, days.
And there, I could work on some others online as well, if you're sure.
Okay. Concession stand.
I had a quote from Kevin for, it was twelve thousand something, for the building material. We got a quote from Elton Electric for the electricity for fifteen fifty. Memzies dropped their quote off with Patrick, so we didn't get that one. His quote for construction of the concession stand, it was thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. He did, there's no breakdown except for what it costs for the lumberyard, or what the other items cost, so. And my understanding is that Scott was looking at doing the building by volunteers, you know, the, so... No, that they're, the baseball association and the parents looking to push it, because it won't, once the concrete's poured, it won't take long to put it up.
Can I see Elton Electric's?
So, you said one thousand five hundred and fifty?
Can see it.
Well, part of that isn't...
Oh, gotcha.
I have the debt for the upgrading to OD rates, I'm...
So, what was that?
One thousand five hundred and fifty, one thousand five hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And that's for, Elton Electric for what?
The concession stand electricity.
Okay.
Well, we don't know what plumbing and stuff is.
No, I don't know what the plumbing was. Because, like I said, the materials list was around twelve thousand something, when I glanced at it, it, yeah.
Repeat that, what?
The materials for the list was, is, was around twelve thousand, when I glanced at it, it just...
This is a home you gotta come from, it's right there, street, K and M, it's very far away.
What's that?
The plumber.
That's right there. There's a hydrant right there, and then sewer line right there, probably gonna get down now.
Three thousand and eight?
I was gonna say five, because you got two bathrooms.
Yeah, you got two bathrooms.
You're gonna be at five, you're gonna be at five. So, we're not moving it by the soccer field, it's gonna be at the original, original place.
Right, because police might be, no, watching.
Is it on the corner, or farther in?
It's right where the other one is at. Because we had discussion about moving closer to the soccer fields.
The problem with that is there's no water or sewer down there, there's water and sewer right where it is now, and it's gonna cost a lot more if we don't get it aligned.
Yeah. We, on the sixteenth, Susan, on the sixteenth, could we have a...
Yeah, we can have a special meeting.
A special meeting, okay.
Yep.
Why don't we have, why don't we look at all of this and make sure that everything is in and on our special meeting, or have a special meeting on the sixteenth?
I have to talk to Shelby, too, I gotta call them.
Yeah, I will drop off the whole...
Yeah, I gotta talk to them either tomorrow or the next week.
Real concrete, older, no?
No.
I don't know.
Well...
Did he not talk to you about it?
No.
I said before, I'm still be a laborer, and this concrete cost, right? Interesting question, too, as far as who was gonna run it, Scott was kinda wondering, there's a couple, there's some interest in it.
Yeah, there's a couple people that are interested in running it, yeah.
So...
I think it was whether we were the ones that hired, have hired, do the contract with them, or whether it's baseball association.
Right. Did you find out the information?
I did not.
Because we, he was just kinda wondering who that decision should be up to, as far as them, if they wanna make that decision with, since there's multiple interest, or I, I don't know, what we've done in the past, I, maybe there's never been.
Well, the last person that was, done it consistently for several years, she, I believe, went through the baseball association, it's, the whole problem is, is the city owns the property, but baseball association does a lot of the ins and outs of it, that's where we, you know, why, and we tried to get somebody last year for contracting it, you know, but didn't get, nobody wanted to do it. The biggest thing for the city is, if they're, if there's somebody who's doing it for profit, they're gonna have to pay for something for electricity, because we can't just let them use the building and not pay for that, you know, if it's a nonprofit person, somebody who's doing it for, either the funds go to the baseball association, or if it's a nonprofit, like the Elton Childcare Center did it, then it wouldn't be as a push for, they're like, you know, having some cover of electricity because it is a nonprofit.
How about the pender replacements?
Oh, no one probably fall under our umbrella of not having to have one, but they have to pay sales tax, if they're not a nonprofit, right, a nonprofit.
My original thought was to leave it up to the association, just because it's their, like, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, they're gonna have to work with them anyways, because of all the ball things.
Well, that's kinda, that's kinda my thought, is they're the ones, it's their organization, I mean, we don't organize any of their events, you know, I mean, they're the ones that gotta work with them, you know, that's, this is my two cents.
Whoever, whoever it is, depending upon who, who they are, they pay electricity or they don't, and they have to pay their taxes, and there we go.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I don't think so.
I would just say, we have to think...
Who applies all the food, you know, the person who wants to run it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. They're responsible for all of that.
Yep.
Well, as far as the electricity goes, you definitely must just have to make a fee.
Yeah, and I think that's what we...
You know, it's not a, it wouldn't be an exact science, it would just be a general coverage fee.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Because it's not worth having another meter on there.
No, no.
That's why I asked if we had a meter, I didn't know, that's, it would be easier to just put it on.
We'll start a timer.
Yeah.
Kill a lot an hour.
Okay. The last bullet point on that is for the fencing, and Kevin gave me a quote, and I don't, I assume this doesn't include, I assume somebody else will be installing it, that the total quote for six-foot fence, eight hundred and fifty feet of a, at a six-foot fence, all accessories plus gates and doorways, is eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Now, did you guys discuss that at the baseball association meeting?
We did, and Chuck said that they would entertain the idea of paying a percentage of it.
Okay.
So, but I mean, we didn't have a number at that time, we had no idea how much it was.
Now, I know Scott talked about, you know, the dueling duels, what, depending on what they can bring in for that, that could potentially pay for some substantial amount of it.
Well, I think the way we need to look at it perspective-wise is the baseball association runs it and they pay for the maintenance of the field.
Right.
And they are bringing in all the, it's not necessarily profits, but all the fees from the players. The city doesn't see any of that, but we're maintaining the park as well. So, I mean, I, I think there's a percentage that, that we can, we have our, like, our percentage, that's our percentage that is.
Right.
I agree.
So we, um, last year we got quotes from Elkton Electric to upgrade all of the lighting system in the community center, the fire department and the shop. I know the fire department's looking into it because they will also want motion sensors by the doors so that they don't have, people don't have to worry about finding fumbling for the light switch. And I think they said there's like twenty-some light fixtures that are out to the center.
Yeah.
Either they need to be replaced or we need to plan this upgrade. It's, um, and I talked to Justin and he said he would honor these quotes. So, for the community center, it was sixty-five hundred dollars with an estimated rebate, and I don't know how much that would change from Otter Tail was thirteen hundred. Um, the quote for the, what we have for the fire hall was two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars with a rebate of seven hundred and ninety. And the quote for the shop was eight hundred and ninety-five dollars with a rebate of three hundred and ten. I know it's not budgeted for, but...
City shop?
Yeah, city shop. Yep.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
Was I missing a building here?
Well, with that many light fixtures out in the center, it's kinda...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The second one was the fire hall or the...
The second one was for the fire hall, and I'm not sure.
I got the number of them.
Sure what they have figured out yet with them, and they may even pay for part of it if not.
And into a city shop, right?
Yep, for the city shop.
Well, I think we should just do it. I mean, uh, it's local businesses, yeah.
And I know that he told the fire department that it would, obviously it would be on a, um, a crappy day type of thing that he would take on those jobs, like, or towards the fall. You know, we can't work outside and it's cold or whatever.
Would the center take precedence or...
There's already, isn't there?
Now, what is the deal with that?
There's gotta be a couple LEDs in there, the lights aren't different.
They're different, yeah, I don't know.
Almost looks like we got some work in there.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell yet.
That's kinda a misfit.
It is.
It is.
A mishmash?
Hodgepodge.
A hodgepodge? I do, I, I, I saw move. And then, uh, the hodgepodge can be looked at, and if he's not gonna be able to do, uh, some of the work until later, then there has to be a decision which takes precedence. And I think that if he can do the center first, after the mishmash is looked at, then that'd be cool.
So that's these lights and everything too?
I assume so.
The...
They've got...
Oh, I thought...
Oh, I don't know.
They're just in there, I don't know.
Or are they just in there?
I, you know what, now I'm confused, because I thought it was...
I don't know.
I thought it was everything.
I thought it was too, but it may not.
Well, let's replace and do as long as it's everything.
Says nineteen four bulb fluorescents, a hundred and thirty-two bulb fluorescent, so that's gotta be, you know, including all the offices. Because I know he looked at here...
Because they're four bulbs, right?
Four bulb fluorescents.
These, these look like four.
Yeah, so that's, the nineteen is the four bulb fluorescents throughout.
The ones in the hallway.
Probably in the hallway.
Those are two?
Yeah, those are two. And all the ones in the center are two.
Yep, so the nineteen must be in the offices.
And then I don't know how many, I think he also looked at the museum too, but I don't... Like I said, this was Ben Paul, so...
So we're looking at what, seven thousand dollars in rebates-ish?
Seven, I think, yes. But you don't know the rebate on the one, right?
I'll, I'll do the check and then the rebate.
They may, they may have a...
Well, we gotta see what's, I gotta just see what's there.
So the total of the bids is nine thousand eight twenty-seven.
Seven hundred for one. Okay.
Don't you put it in fingers?
Twenty...
Eighty-two, seven...
Where's the one?
So seven thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars is with subtracting the rebates out.
And we might get more. Do we have money in the community center fund for that, or where, where would that come from?
Well, it would come, some, obviously every community center would come out of there, I mean... I don't think we have that much budgeted for it.
Well, that'd be the vast majority of the expense if it's in there.
Right.
Right.
And it's gonna, our bill will decrease, and that bill's usually two to four hundred dollars a month. For the, well, that's the whole community center.
And then you cut that and...
Yeah.
How much would that cost?
Well, the lighting portion would have. But the, but...
You're still, the water heaters and the...
Yeah, I mean, the thing with it is, the lane isn't that big.
Because it's not on all the time.
Right.
Well, it's either we replace it with LEDs or we go through and spend much money on like bulbs and valves.
No, no, no.
Yeah, exactly, so...
Yes. I think when we counted, there was thirty-one bulbs, there were thirty-one, thirty-two, something like that out in there.
Well, if we did, could we just make it a priority, get the ones that are working, that are not working, make that a priority, just get that done right away, so we actually have a way to, and the rest of it can be done.
I mean, maybe we can do it within a month or something like that.
Right. Of the ones that are working.
Right.
Right. Because that does look kinda...
Yeah, it looks bad. And we got a meeting coming up here with...
People?
Yeah. Got at least, what, three weddings, three or four weddings booked this summer, mostly this fall, but, yeah. So, in a motion, do we have a second?
Motion by Naima to do the LED upgrade.
Oh, second?
Motion by Naima, second by Erin to do an LED light upgrade in the community center, the fire hall and the city shop. All in favor?
Agreed.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, so just for clarification on the running of the concession stand, do we, we don't need a motion on that, we just, all are, kinda, great with baseball association and funding staff, they're all...
They're in the deal with them.
Mm-hmm.
They'll put it out there.
Could they leave it something like that?
She's already got it out there, it's because multiple people wanna run it now.
I'll have to do that.
Yeah. And the construction's gonna have to be tabled until we get more information.
Yeah. And that, we brought up for our special meeting after the, uh...
So Greg, do you have any idea what it might, what we, to be used for, like, a hundred dollar flat fee for electricity?
Depends what they're gonna be using. Yeah, I mean, you're talking for three hours.
Refrigerator.
Refrigerator.
Yeah, and that's, if you're talking, refrigerator, you're talking two hundred kilo hours a month, which is two dollars, you know?
I need to plug in down here.
So, huh.
I mean, if you're, you know...
So they don't wanna, I mean...
That seems kinda high.
Crown pots, ten cents an hour, uh, twelve cents an hour, um, high.
Then we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, it's...
Hundred dollars for the whole summer?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is, you know, just...
Oh, for the whole summer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, a hundred dollars for the whole summer.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I would think that'd be more than covered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that too much?
Well, maybe that is too much, but...
Okay, crunch the numbers by Monday.
Just let me know what they're gonna be running.
Last year we had three fridges between two concession stands and three or four crown pots each time you had the concession stand open.
And they're at least, they're running what, four, four days a week?
Four nights a week, popcorn machine.
Popcorn, okay, so you're talking, what, a hundred, I mean, a hundred, I think it can be high.
Yeah.
This is Otter Tail we're talking about, those, is that in the car?
Maybe two hundred. It ain't, it ain't gonna be a whole, yeah.
Give us a ballpark by Monday.
Seventy-five dollars a year would be, I think would be sufficient.
So why don't we just say that?
Wouldn't that be fair?
We collect a seventy-five dollar fee for electricity in the garden, and I guess it's a nonprofit.
And that's a nonprofit, there you go.
Yeah, and they're gonna have to pay, same price for a sales tax license and do sales tax.
No, it's up to you.
And that's gonna get fishy-washy with a food service license.
Yeah, we've been through that already.
Yeah.
All right, budget overview?
Yeah.
I should've said citizens' count, probably, but, um, it's never been, to my knowledge, the city cemetery has never been funded or anything by, by the city.
Nope.
Well, they're okay for this year, but in the future, they might not be. And it takes anywhere roughly from forty-five hundred to five thousand dollars a year to just demolish. Everything else is, is done in there. I was talking to, um, Bob Thompson, who's on the cemetery board or whatever, and I didn't know, it's not in our budget this year, like I said, they're good for this year, but just, I think we should be thinking for the longevity of a, of a city cemetery to make sure that's funded. And whether it's, if they have, we'll look at it and like, I'm just throwing it out there, like, in first part of the year, say they have two thousand dollars in their budget, or in their checking account, and they need five, I think we, I don't know if we set a, set limit into a budget of like three thousand dollars a year, and hopefully the rest can be self-funded. If, if they don't, if they don't need the money, we don't transfer it, and just have like a maximum of five thousand dollars in their account to take care of expenses at a certain time of the year or something, but, uh, I'm just throwing it out there for food, for thought, for longevity of a cemetery, so...
Could be more worth our while, have our summer help go along there?
It takes a long time. Yeah.
Yeah, you have to...
Cemeteries are voters.
By the time you turn it...
You have to mow down.
So, I mean, right now, I mean, they got people, they can find people to mow for now and stuff like that, I mean, but, I just think longevity, we do have our name on it as, as a city, but as, they're not selling as, as many plots and a few people that donate every year are no longer above ground and... And stuff like that.
That's a good way to put it.
You say, Greg, will you run that?
No. But, you know, so...
Well, if they don't use it, they don't use it.
Right, and if they don't need it, we don't, we don't give it. But, you know, and I don't, I don't expect the city to, to pay for the full budget, but I mean, I think we should put something in our budget as an emergency fund to make sure that's... I mean, I don't know, everybody else thinks, but it don't need to be done now, it don't need to be done next month, or, pretty much our budget.
How part, how much of the is city and how much is the Lutheran? It's part of it's the Lutheran, right?
Well, the Lutherans take care of their own.
Yeah, oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Lutherans pay to, they pay to mow their own.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Yep, that's totally separate.
I didn't, I don't really even know, I mean, I assume, I mean, so Lutheran side's on the south side, right?
Yeah, it's just the front, it's actually just the front, south.
Okay.
And the rest of Elkton City goes, it's kinda an L.
Yeah, because, yeah, my doctor's on the north, so...
So, I mean, I, just have a food for thought. I don't know what other towns do or not either, I have no idea, but...
I know Chuck used to pay some kids to go mow the cemetery, I don't know what, what side it was, but...
Probably the Catholics.
The Catholics.
That's another, that's out there.
Yeah, I don't know which one it was, I know that Patrick used to mow it as a kid, he used to go mow the cemetery, he'll talk to him.
Well, since it is city, I think that...
I have an obligation to support it.
Well, you know, and if you wanna, if people that live in the town wanna be buried there, I mean, you're gonna wanna know that there's money to take care of.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, in the future, so, I, it's just, I, just remind that a budget time, and maybe we can, but, it's, some years you may not have to donate any, or budget to swap money or anytime, sometimes you might have to give the full three thousand dollars or something, but...
Well, I can tell you, as an elder in need of quite a bit of gravel.
They are.
Two, it's very, it's very bad.
Yeah, there's puddles.
It's, I mean, there's grass growing up between, I mean, it's, it doesn't look very good.
Right. So would, uh, would that portion, would we take care of that portion of it, or is that, would that be included in the five thousand? I've got five thousand.
That's for the mowing, forty-five, it all depends on how much it rains, you know? I mean, last few years, you, you couldn't keep up, you know, and, and some years you're done in July.
What about the puddles, then?
They just need a lot of gravel.
So we can just dump some gravel a little bit? Okay, so that's taking care of it.
I mean, for apples, what, fifty, sixty bucks a load?
Yeah.
Especially on their, so...
Worth more for us to do it than it is to have somebody else go in, to have them pay it, and it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, Steve's volunteering to know, plant some gravel.
Yeah, I'm talking to him, how much you wanna put out there?
What'd you say?
How much you wanna put out there?
Make it look...
I'll talk about, he's kinda, I mean, guy there. I just, I said I'd bring it up and who'd mention it?
Yeah.
Let's see what...
Thanks.
Budget overview.
I do some look, though.
So, it was only, this one was only like eight hundred, which just feels good, but most of that's from the, even, all the Lutherans are gonna be mowing January. January, I figure, always thought.
What are you guys pointing at? You see some, that nuisance, nuisance available?
Yeah, that was, okay, so, that was the five thousand dollars we sent to, to miniscule for our, um, nuisance person to come down. And he'll start that next month or whatever.
Code in force, you're...
Code, thank you. And otherwise, the cops still tearing down the site property.
Oh, but, yeah.
That came back higher than...
Right.
Than what we thought, yeah.
And it didn't come in until the end of the year.
Yeah, months later. Well, that's good, so he starts in April, one or both decades.
I'm assuming he'll start in April.
Where are we at with the property? I didn't make it last month.
Um, so I sent information to Brisman twice about how much we, we want to get back on it, and he's supposed to be drawn, he's supposed to have drawn out the papers and we may have a closing.
Has he, have they set a closing date, or?
No, not that I'm aware of. Lenny's been in here a couple times, wondering about it, like I said, that's, I mean, it's all on his hands, so.
Yeah, you can't, you can't rush stuff.
No, I was just curious to, if people wanna buy his stuff.
Well, yeah, yeah, she, there's still plenty to buy, so that's good.
Something to learn.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Can't set up, what do you got?
Let me go to once we, if the loan closed, we may.
Then we can. Say what?
Hopefully we won't spend any more money on the stove. We're gonna be, kinda roll around the pump a lot or not.
Yeah, that's the only problem, is our stove will still be in the corner.
Oh, you gotta put a stump on that ground?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, um, the fire department? Well, there's still not enough in there to cover that truck, right?
Truck to cover what truck?
The truck that, that Chris was talking about.
Well, they're not even, they're not
Not yet.
Purchasing it yet.
Right.
We have, we set a little bit
Aside.
Twenty-five and ten thousand aside every year. And they draw, once they decide to go for whatever truck they're looking at, we withdraw all that money to them. They get their money from the county and from the townships to make the first down payment or whatever, and then we put it on a payment plan like we always have.
Alright.
So, committee reports?
Oh, well, we have to Jason or Alex. Oh, he's got this for us. I don't know if we wanna do this.
Do a hand book.
Handbook for his bar over there. I don't know if it's finished, he's not here to tell us, so.
Yeah, let me just review it and have an updated our next meeting on that.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
Now, we're going to the committee now.
Went to the committee.
I'm looking like what?
One thing I would like to add to the committees is another assignment. With us overviewing all of the building permits, I'd like to put in place a building permit committee to be able to approve, I mean, whether they meet twice a week, just so we can approve it a month, or twice a month, sorry, well, bi-weekly. Um, versus, uh, once a month to approve building permits, that way if people aren't waiting all the month to take their building permits, is anybody opposed to that?
I should take off.
Um, so, my thoughts were if we're doing flat work, building permits, I don't really want you on that committee, cause then you have to step back from any that you're doing yourself. So I would put it under parking wreck in public buildings, it'd be Scott, Naima, and John. Cool. So you all just have to get together and review them and approve them. Yeah, and what we can do is I'll make, I can make copies and stick them in your, like, let you know, stick them in your box or whatever, and you can come in whenever and look at them and let me know.
Okay, well, it's set like what, weeks?
Why don't you just do the fifteen?
Fifteen to thirty, no?
Cause well, what we can meet, the council can meet at the beginning, and you just need one in the middle, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that make sense?
Yeah, you're right, and one. So doing around the fifteenth of the month?
Yeah, or twenty-third. Seventeenth, seventeenth and a half?
It's really hard when we're setting our first meeting around, yeah. So I like that second Tuesday versus the second Monday. Make that date letter. The third Monday? Yeah, I would say that would be better. The second here, Thursday. You're gonna have to change it a little bit, it's got scheduled a little too. There's gonna be no vote around that, we just gotta work. But at least that it's in the middle of the month.
And you'd be there right now?
Scott, John, Naima.
Cause I'm gonna compete with myself, but like two feet, like, one inch. So, if he's not here, we can handle it, right?
Did you have an update, Natalie?
I think it's built.
Yes, well, I did, um, reach out to some different people and things for our direct program that they have. Some of them just didn't respond at all. You know, some of them said, I, I went a little further because there was no response from certain ones that you specifically requested. The city of Arlington said that they crossed their fingers every year just hoping that they can get staff hired, which is one of the issues that you're seeing. That you're not getting anybody to apply for the job. And then when I reached out to Loa, he said that if you had a community center, they would have a full-time person. And he said that, um, they view it as a summer rock person, as an amen, uh, amenity for the community and an important aspect of being family-friendly community.
They don't have one?
They don't have community centers, they don't have anything.
Or don't have a community.
They don't, they do not.
Hope he's bought. Two thousand?
Twenty-five or two.
Yeah. They're actually in Elkhornburg, my ancestor.
What?
I think Ashley took a job at the rookie, city rookie, I guess. That surprised me, he came through the list every day, it was like, whoa. Parents there. Mary Ryan's, yeah.
But when they're doing, boy, they're gonna need to have somebody really special.
Talking payload.
You got upgraded?
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, and outdoor light, like Aaron Hammond in his garage lights up the whole, whole city.
Yeah, I was, I was going like this, oh, boom.
Numbers, owners lost.
Surplus property, moving on, we have a resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, resolution twenty twenty dash zero three point zero one can be resolved, the city of Arlington, South Dakota, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus, as provided by South Dakota law, common by law six dash thirteen dash four, to be sold by sealed bid. R two thousand ten, ten, can spray sewer generator. So pass, I need a motion to pass this, and then we have to appoint appraisers to appraise it. John? Motion by Naima, second by John, to approve resolution twenty twenty dash three point zero one.
Who would be the appraisers? Or who would be the appraisers, who? How many appraisal?
We need three, we go to appraise it, appraise. Steve said.
From us?
Us, so anybody in the community that would know, like Steve doesn't think, nobody knows what it costs. I have a.
Ninety-five percent of people aren't gonna know what it even is.
Right.
Right, that's why, I mean.
All right, so it can be like two of you guys or maybe Steve to appraise it.
Why don't we just do that, because we can, we can do some research and just get a rough idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we're gonna appoint Steve and Greg and Aaron. Uh, we paid, what was it, a little over twelve thousand for it new, and I think you said that you usually can't talk out. So I just need you guys to decide, come into my office, fill out paperwork, and then we can give it out there.
How many years ago?
Two thousand ten, so ten years ago. I'm super thankful that he called me and explained something to me, he doesn't call me stupid when I ask questions. He's very good at explaining things. Okay, city infrastructure projects, I talked to Jeff today. The plans are finalized, they are at the DOT and at the DNR waiting for approval, cause that's who our grants come from, the bare loans come from. So as soon as they approve them, which he hoped was by the end of the week, it will, um, be ready to bid. So we need a motion to authorize Susan and myself to set a bid date and a pre-bid meeting date and a pre-bid.
Pre what you just said?
Meeting date.
So who?
Okay, motion by Naima, second by Greg, to approve a motion of authorization for myself and Susan to set a bid date and a pre-bid night. Pre-bid date, meeting date. Meeting date. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, and I think that's what, ten days, is that when we decided, ten days publication? Yeah, it's not decided.
We're trying to get some contractors for that.
There's only, already a couple that have shown interest.
Or like that, that would date that whole, uh, a little bit to another.
Yeah, a lot of them were holding off because they didn't know what the, what this year was gonna hold. But there were some that were already asking questions to SPN, so that's good. City emergency management plan. That's from a while ago, we kind of talked about what to do, that'll be, uh, yeah, give to a committee and have a new research with Bob, I don't know what we're supposed to do.
Which, which, uh, committee does that fall under?
Um, the emergency is Aaron's committee with Scott and John, public safety emergency.
Must have been ready, working that column, we've been there.
I've never been on.
No.
I was a while ago.
Had something you were looking for, or? Well, what had, what had happened was when I was on the council before, there was a black book this thick that had numbers and the information in terms of, um, the hazardous, wait a minute, would be homeland security sites where, uh, it included the water tower and, and everything. It had numbers and all kinds of different procedures. This is what we do if this happens, this is what you do if that happens. And, um, when I left the council, I gave my book to someone and nobody even remembers the book. So, um, being able to have an emergency, uh, contingency plan or an emergency plan that we have for ourselves, such as when we talked about whether or not the daycare center's gonna be able to be, um, tornado-proof and things of that nature. Uh, what we're gonna have here, Steve would be able to know if the generator that they have is enough, maybe get another generator, it's all these things. It would need to be compiled again, but it was very thorough this book.
And I think Bob can walk us through what's needed and how to.
I have my work.
Oh, yeah? Cool.
Cause we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
No.
That was already there. We gotta put it towards Elton.
Bob should be able to give us a cookie cutter that we just drop and taste.
Right. Feel good, you guys have been handling it.
They make a red book, cause that's an emergency, it's red.
Red, yes. And red, conversely.
That's me.
And it's gonna be in some glass, and you'll have to break the glass again.
Together.
Greg's doing some research on natural gas, right?
Yeah, I, I called Northwestern and, uh, they're doing some looking to kind of see, they gotta get all the right people, it's kind of an in-depth question, and I called their own department um, to see if they can give me an idea, we've got our CAD department that maps out, uh, utilities for cooking services. And, uh, take off the reward was the closest, um, that's thirteen miles, so. But like I said, we gotta find a managing company that would even entertain coming over this direction, meaning that the service territories are all roped and stuff, so. That's, uh, this area without having natural gas, I don't know if that's, that doesn't mean, that's why I gotta do some more research.
Perfect, thank you for doing that, community grant, or, sorry, community survey. Just to mention that it's out there.
It, well, yes, it's, it's, it's there, and, um.
Friday I found a dozen.
Yeah.
A dozen of them in the recycling bin at the post office.
Well, I got, I got three of them.
How did you get three of them?
Oh, I, oh, work in the P O box.
Oh.
Oh, what are they?
These were sent out to everybody in the postal area. Your P O box animal windows?
So that's why there's probably some of the. I don't know, most I just got two, maybe it was just two.
Yeah, it's anonymous.
It was, I didn't.
Just tell them, ask me, it was, it's not anonymous. John, were you here last?
No.
Christie was put this together to get an idea.
Yeah, I read it in a minute, okay.
Yeah, and so, that sheet was actually the one that couldn't run anything when, when Sarah said that, uh, someone came in and they had to be turned away. Uh, but there were quite a few in there, and I.
Yeah, I have an envelope, um, not huge, but.
It's probably in my mailbox, I just have it on my desk.
Well, the, the importance of, the importance of filling that out
My P O box.
Helps, uh, helps everyone know what other people are thinking, number one, because, uh, you see, oh, what ages, elders. And once it comes back, those are some of the things that we can use when we talk about what we have done, we can say we've taken a survey and this is what we, uh, have found out. And those kinds of things are important when you're looking for grants and, and all the information that people wanna know about Elton, so it's very important, very important.
Very least, everybody here should.
At, at the very least.
Uh, it says I'm here to return her by the fifteenth, and she told me to put it the sixteenth.
Cause the fifteenth is on Sunday.
Yeah, so I put it in the paper the sixteenth.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, please, fill it out, bring it back, we need you.
Alright, first net.
We have to table it, I don't know what happened, she might miss it.
Election workers, hey, we just need to approve the appointment of election workers, I have, um, so our election supervisor is Linda Cammon with Vicki Myers and Norman Krogman. And then Patty Thibson as a backup in case somebody's sick. Need a motion, do we? Action motion.
I said.
Motion by Natalie, second by Naima, to approve the election workers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pay the bills. Everybody comes out, votes.
On April fourteenth?
Yes.
Is our lunch?
Do you have any ads? Nope. Wow, come on, it's the nineteenth of the month.
Yeah, I looked at the first one and then I went back and looked at it, I said, wow.
Do you have any question?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Aaron, second by Naima, to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I got one more thing, I guess, what, what, what were your guys' thoughts on the drain tile, north of town and west of town? We're gonna do something, we need to They started running water that way. Yes, you missed.
How far is it to the north straight from where you wanted?
I don't remember what the footage is.
I got them. You got a quote on that though?
Yes. Man, as far as that one, the west side over there too, getting it put on Seventh Street and Sixth Street for drainage for the school and then tied into that main line.
That one, that one's not so bad, no. This one, I, I don't have it with me, but.
Okay. I absolutely consented to John, when he sent me information.
But, do we leave it?
Yeah.
On, on that one, we have to.
I, I, that's, was one of the reasons I was calling.
Plus, we went to Twin Cities.
That's right. So, Jeff looked at it, um, he just notes a couple things on the slope, and making sure that the slope's maintained to the guidelines, basically, is what I got from it. Um, if it's fine sand, if we're not at the correct slope, it's gonna cause issues.
And that's what it is going across that way too, so, but I'll talk to him on that and get clarification on that, because this is, this is surface water that we're trying to control here, we're not, we're, no, it's not groundwater. It's surface water, getting the surface water away from everything.
And the other thing is easements, do we have easements for what we did last time already?
The tile going along, uh, on the sewer line is an easement, so that one's fine, and I have no idea what, I know Dave handled that paperwork on that other one, going across Langens property.
Yes, we got signed easements for that too, we got signed easements on all that. So, going forward, last year we got away with considering it an emergency, so we didn't have to do bidding. This one, I don't think we're gonna get away with calling it an emergency, so it's over fifty thousand dollars, we're gonna have to have it bid.
How many people will do that?
Well, the bidding process, we need to put it in the paper. See, we have to put it in the paper twice and set a, set a bid date, where they'll return in their bids by a certain date and we'll all know as, as a sealed bid. But we have to have, I don't know what you're gonna put in the bid for that, I, I don't know how to write a bid like that tightly, or.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe Chuck could help us with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And didn't the bid amount go up, didn't they pass that in the legislature just recently?
Fifty thousand. It, it won't go into effect until July first, whatever's happening to the legislature, and that is one that happened in the legislature.
Yeah, did you?
It, well, it went up, but I don't remember how much it went up to.
Fifty-five, that's pretty.
Well, that's the.
Are you giving us, you've been talking about it?
I'm for it.
So, you're just gonna get clarification on that, all this stuff, and, and I mean, we, meeting again Monday, we can get it on that agenda.
Here we go.
I, I do have one other thing that was sent to me, it's paint South Dakota, and it is a, um, basically, um, the South Dakota Housing Development Authority purchases the paint if primer needed, and then volunteer groups are responsible for going around and preparing and painting the houses, and we can nominate, um, a single-family household, um, owner-occupied residency that's in need of painting, and it's somebody that should be physically or financially unable to paint their home. So if you know anyone in town, we can put our heads together and nominate someone.
Yep.
Did you have their house painted?
Yeah.
Did you get their house painted?
Yes.
All right, I, uh, I move, uh, to, uh, I want to executive. Personnel.
Okay. Motion by Naima, second by.
I'll second.
Aaron. You don't want to executive for personnel?
Say it.
All in favor?
You snuck about, oh.
Aye.
All in favor? Oh, motion carries.
I even got.
You know what, it's, don't take any of your bitchy.
Hey, you have the Elkhorn electric one?
Do you have a special meeting on Monday?
I have everything, yeah.
Special meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, would you like all the special meetings, just for every other day?
I do not. Has anybody got the Elkhorn electric? She's got, okay.
Except, except.
That's the, that's.
And just to talk about. Well, right, we have to meet for the equalization, and then we'll meet for other things as well.
It's, it's better to do it that way than to have three different meanings.
And then the thing on the eighteenth, that's not open to the public, that's just legislative, people count, whatever.
All right, we're out of executive session at nine forty-one.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Aaron to adjourn, second by Naima, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right. So that's on my agenda tomorrow.